It's two o'clock and this meeting, I don't think is coming through here. It's two o'clock in this meeting. We'll come to order. First off, we have this roll call. We have all of our directors, I'm sorry, all of our trustees, our director, our assistant director, business manager, council is not going to be here and neither will our treasurer and our communication specialist is here. I want to go back. I'll say, I think when it comes to roll call, I looked it up. I think the only requirement is for the governing body to be part of the roll call. Although we can always have extra people, so I feel like I'd like to recognize when staff is here as well. And I also made an error in oversight back at the public hearing or the budget hearing. I did not recognize the fact that the assistant director was here and the business manager was here. So it was an oversight. I wasn't intentionally ignoring you two folks, so thank you. Next, we have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands for the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda, number four is public comment. Speakers state your name and community and speak for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of stability and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks or disruptions from the audience will be tolerated. Thank you. First up, my list today is Mariana Cochran.
Good afternoon. I'm no fan of Halloween, but since it seems the ads and planning began the day after July 4th, it's a timely topic. Admittedly, the innocent toddler costumes of strawberries and bumblebees are adorable, but there's little else that's redeemable about Halloween. With the epidemic of childhood obesity and diabetes, no one needs the onslaught candy. And I'm especially sympathetic towards teachers handling all those wired kids in the weeks afterward. Halloween is an excuse for adults to be foolish, wear provocative costumes, and most egregiously to frighten children, which is inexcusable. But I chose this theme today because there's a concerted effort in this community and even beyond our county borders to cast a spell, to deceive and spook the public that CLN was the wicked witch seeking to destroy CIN. Relatedly, I'll remind the board and Director Walters that CLN staff seems to have had a past affinity for promoting witchcraft, combined with LGBT to minors, as this December 2022 photo illustrates of a display in the Hayden Y.A. section. While campaigning last spring in Post Falls, I met a retired career Spokane librarian who said that witchcraft was so rampant among library staff, it was one of the many reasons she left the profession. But that's just one anecdote, so we won't draw conclusions. Interesting nevertheless. But back to the CIN-CLN split. I had been an advocate of avoiding the split due to the advantages of access to a wider collection. But since CIN took their drastic step, I've reflected on the recalcitrance of many Idaho libraries who are blatantly defying Idaho statute 181517B, which protects minors. This includes our neighboring Coeur d'Alene Library, which has demonstrated repeated disdain for this law, even when specific books have been challenged. So despite CDA Library's beautiful edifice, their conviction to despoil children colors it bleak and off limits in my eyes and to many in the community. So CLN is better for not having the affiliation. By contrast, I'm heartened regarding CLN's new chapter and appreciate the informative bright future section on CLN's website. Additionally, just two days ago, I was at the fair and stopped by CLN's booth where I made a fragrant essential oil perfume rollerball, which I was told was a preview of an upcoming CLN adult program. So not only is CLN's future bright, it smells good too. Perhaps trustee Robinson can lend her voice and talents to give an enema to the toxic fallacies about CLN by writing a CDA press letter to the editor, or my turn, CLN could use your support beyond this room. Enclosing the world is a haunting place, but CLN and what this board and Director Walters have accomplished in the last three years have created a fountain of hope. Thank you for what you do to spark light and to ward off evil's relentless approachment.
Thank you. Next speaker today is Clarice.
I think I said Clarice.
I think it was the way you wrote it.
Yeah.
It was too fancy.
Well, good afternoon. I was gonna start today by reading some lyrics of a song I was listening to this morning called Brave. Artist was Danny Goki. And it's way better listening to it, but I was staying quiet. I'm not looking for a fight. I don't hate nobody, but nobody seems to like. But I want to live what I believe. I want to keep my right to speak for my family, for my faith, to anyone who feels the same. Be brave. Stand up for freedom. Stand for truth. Don't be afraid. Got a voice that you can use, so go on, speak out the times right now. If you want to keep the flame of liberty ablaze, stand up and be brave. Oh, stand up and be brave. We're the generation that has to make a choice. Will we push against this evil, or will we watch while it destroys what so many died to give us? This great country that we live in, there's a heavy price for freedom. This is how we keep it. We are the people. They're red, white, and blue. Will you stand for me because I will stand for you? We are the people with different points of view. Will you stand for me because I will stand for you? And there's more to it and stuff, but I guess I was listening to the budget meeting from last week. A 12-minute meeting, that's great. And somebody was talking, one of the commentators was talking about Stampline having the most rich budget of all the libraries in Idaho. I'm not entirely sure if I was understanding her correctly, but I was thinking that maybe that was a compliment to you guys since you are running seven libraries on the same or less budget apparently. And I don't know, I've spent a lot of time at that library. And I think that you guys should be commended for leading the way and complying with the law. I think best in Idaho and maybe for Stampline or Elaine or the rest of them. Complying with the law will require a lawsuit on behalf of the upset parent. That's my opinion. The other thing I was going to say was, oh yeah, just that you all have such a different spirit here than past boards and past directors. And it's very noticeable and very encouraging. And I just continue to appreciate the work you're doing. And I know it is a lot of work. I'm grateful as a mom and as a community member. And then, yeah, the CIN, I'm not sure I can totally weigh in on that. But I was in the Coeur d'Alene Library this morning and they're definitely advertising a certain way of doing things and using some adjectives I probably would. But just thinking about you guys and praying for that to go correctly and for the truth to be revealed on that. And then I'll just conclude with, I think it's very great that you're having a presence at the fair. And I'm gonna check it out later today. I'll have more fun than you guys probably.
Thank you. And the last speaker signed up here is Teresa Burkett.
Hi, Teresa Burkett, Post Falls. I want to emphasize a few key points I made at the budget hearing. Specifically, I would like to highlight that the ICRAM funds totaling $228,000, which are intended for collection development by ICRAM, are not included in the budget's collection line item. Whether the board allocates $60,000 or $163,000 to the collection budget, the total will still be $255,000, which remains unchanged from 2025. Mr. Walters has stated the need for an additional $27,000 books due to the dissolution of CIN, but the proposed budget only increases the allocation for new books by $50,000 while reducing the electronic collection budget by $50,000. This raises questions about the feasibility of acquiring $27,000 books for just $50,000 and whether the ICRAM funds be unused in 2026. These funds are taxes our community has already paid and we need immediate access to the books lost in 2024. Although I often disagree with Mr. Plas, I support his recent statement regarding the lesser importance of district offices compared to our community's pressing needs. There is underutilized space in Post Falls that could serve an expanded community collection. Mr. Walters seems more focused on his renovation preferences rather than on enhancing community resources. Prioritizing district offices over community needs is short-sighted and unreasonable. And where would the funds come from in an event of renovations? Additionally, I would like to speak about the dissolution of CIN and its impact on our community. Here are a few stories from your community I'd like to share. First, this is from a patron. I have 67 items checked out from CLN. Fifteen were due and I had to call in to renew instead of doing it myself online since the system is switching over to non-CIN. Only four of the 15 items are CLN. The other 11 are outside CLN and can't be renewed and I'll never see those books again. I just one request eight items. I recently requested eight items and CLN only had one. So one out of eight, if I want those other seven books, I have to put in a purchase request or an interlibrary loan request. My ratio used to be more like 24 out of 25 were available from the CIN. Here's another one. My son tried to get some books from the series he's reading, but those books are CIN only now and we can't get them. And lastly, my daughter has a similar issue with her holds. None of them are available now. I bought several books to hold her over until we can purchase the CDA library card, but it's a giant pain and not something everyone could do. I certainly can't afford to buy all her books, just a few to get us through. These community complaints highlight important concerns that CLN needs to address. Finally, every dollar this district receives in funding must be clearly shown in this budget. Our community deserves clear information and prioritization of our needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public comment period. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. First item on there are the minutes of the regular meeting. Anyone have any comments regarding the regular meeting minutes from July 17th? Trustee Plas.
I'm not, I'm not going to point out any changes I think are incorrect, but I noticed a little change. It seems like it's more of a narrative now of what was discussed, maybe by going back and listening to the recording or some type of minutes. Is this what, is this what we want for minutes? Kind of a narrative of editing and not saying who said what. I don't know that I have a preference, but it seems to have changed.
Trustee Robinson.
I also noticed the change. I was thinking along the same lines. I do believe the board requested maybe a year ago though that it wasn't said who said what in the minutes. So that was, that was a board request that they're following. But I definitely noticed a different tone in the minutes and I wonder if you could share about that.
I'll also weigh in on it. I think, I think we agreed way back. And again, I don't think the person taking the minutes was here or there, but I think we agreed. I think, I'm not sure. I think Roberts Rule says the minutes are supposed to document what was done, not necessarily who said what, I think. And the former chair may be able to fill me on that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Roberts Rules, it's supposed to be more of a summary. And you know, sometimes it's interesting to read all the extra, but I hate for people to go to extra work when it's not necessary. And I believe that ICRAM in a presentation a few years ago had also said that it's just supposed to be a brief summary.
So if it helps to set up the staff that figured it out and lets you already know, I'll be happy to do a little homework and see exactly what minutes are supposed to have in it. But I think it's supposed to, I think less verbiage there and more what was actually done, I guess it is. But I'm not 100%, but I think there is something in the Roberts Rules book that does cover agendas. And there may be something also in the Idaho Commission for Libraries trustee book as well. So if you want, I'll take that as a homework assignment except I told trustee Plas.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I just think that we're supposed, I guess I didn't finish my thought on it, but I think it should be more of a summary of what was decided, not so much the back and forth discussion. It's kind of hard to follow reading through here. And then it's hard to find what was decided or what was agreed on consensually.
Okay, anybody else have any, anything specific then regarding the minutes from the July 17th meeting? Very good. I don't hear anything on that. We'll go to the next three minutes where the special meeting from.
They need to be approved.
Well, I'm not finished. We have minutes.
Oh, you were just doing.
I'm just going, I'm gonna do the whole consent agenda. So it's good, keep me on track. I'm still looking. Minutes from the special meeting from July 28th. We have the minutes there. I find my grammar errors too. Good, great, daddy. Stop working on it. Anybody have anything on that? No? Very good. We'll move on to the minutes from the CIN meeting from June 18th, 2025. Trustee Plas, which one are you going to?
I'm back on the 28th. On the top, it's like third line on the top of the second page. 3% should be published. Give us time to think about. August had moved to publish 3% draft.
Which paragraph are you on?
The third line. 3% should be published. Get to give us time to think about what budget should be voted on. August had moved to publish 3%. If it was a motion, then we should have voted on it. I think it was because it was an action item because a previous meeting wasn't there, so we needed to do that. So all we have is recorded is the action item of.
Well, I believe below that, they keep reading down. This does indicate that you voted then.
Oh, okay, okay. We're stuck in the middle of the.
Yeah, it's kind of spread out. You're on the record. Okay. Right, moving on to the Community Information Network meeting minutes from June 18th. I did find one error on that one, by the way. I think it's an error. In the halfway down the page, it says business action items. And near the end of the dissolution of CIN, it says that the CIN as of 9:30, I think that was 6:30. That was June 30th. That wasn't supposed to be, I don't think, September 30th. So I don't know if we see a difference because I don't think, we need again, and I don't think we changed their minutes. I don't even know why we reviewed their minutes, but for the record, I think that data is incorrect. Anyone else have any? Trustee Plas.
I got some big issues, big red lights gone on for me since this is ending. And now this is, I'm looking at the finance page. That's okay to go on to that.
Do we have anything further regarding the minutes? I feel we are. No? Okay, we'll move on to the CIN financial statement from June 28th.
But June 30th it ended. Forever means road here pretty quick. We, this ends September 30th. You've got a little bit over a month to get things straightened out. I went back and looked at the JPA for this setup and I don't see anything about CIN being able to have any assets. Balance sheet shows they have assets. They have bank accounts. But before I even get into the assets, you know, and the question on the assets is who's going to get it? On the community library income line, whoops, the fourth line on the revenues, CLN has paid 79% as of June 30th. Have we or will be paid a full 100%? So that's one question. The next question, I bet this is for, is down on expenses. There's three zeros there. eBook membership, the second line on expenses, zero. So they apparently have not spent any money, even though their budget is spend $10,000. Ebsco, Open, Athens, Novelis, whatever that is, they're supposed to spend, our budget is spent $9,700 and they've spent zero. Accounting services, further down, zero. Their budget is spent $2,100. Is CIN not paying that or these bills due? I think there's really odd things to say mildly about their accounting. Second, third line to the bottom, expenses, ILG, legal and professional work. It says in the comments that legal and professional service, 619, and check was cut for 1575 to Polly Troxley for legal services in March, April, and May. What were they doing? Were they paying? It's for JPA. What JPA? Was this to set up ILG? And whose attorney is Polly Troxley? The JPA doesn't give any authority to CIN to have an attorney. And it should not be an attorney. I wish our attorney was here. Frankly, I think I'm gonna ask for a special meeting because I think this needs to get a lot of questions answered. You have all any questions? Not yet. Okay. Anyway, I don't think if Polly Troxley, Troxley, or rather, is a attorney, law firm for one of the members, they have no business getting money from CIN. It should be a separate attorney, not a member attorney. So I have a question on that. And then I've got four questions on the balance sheet. Part of it is, what are they doing with the assets? And how are the assets going to be divided? There's, I guess there's some in the JPA that just divided, I think, if I can look. But I don't think they're supposed to have assets. I think it's just supposed to be pay as you go. My big question is, it shows zero for property, again, equipment. Who owns the eBooks? CLN has put a lot of money, tens of thousands, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars into the eBook collection. Who owns it? eBooks are not on our balance sheet, that I know of. But who owns it? They say they have zero. And you've got 40 days to get this figured out. And yeah, they say, you know, words are cheap. They say they're going to divide it up equally, but what we paid. But I want our attorney to dig into this. And I think we should have a special meeting to get this, we're not gonna ask for that at the end. The balance sheet, it's supposed to be assets equals liabilities plus owner equity or taxpayer equity in this case. This, they seem to have several bank accounts, but I don't know what this net income is under capital. I don't know what net assets are because they listed up here, they don't have any property. And I think the balance sheet is a mess. I've never really paid attention to it because it wasn't my thing, but it is now. And I think it should be every one of our things because we're gonna, CLN taxpayers are gonna lose money over this. If we don't, it's legal hell.
Does the director wish to respond to that or is that part of your director's report? Or do you have any input on that? There are quite a few parts to it. That's part of a legal and Polly Troxley, I think will hopefully be settled when our council's around in this special meeting. The thing about overdrive, any resources I have, I'm gonna talk about in my report. And then some of the zero lines and what's been paid, maybe because of June financials and not the July financials, which we're not going to have a CIN fiscal agent with us. So the immediate answer is about, because you're looking at the June and the July would have some answer to those questions. So if I remember the three things, they will get covered in time unless you want us to do it now.
And the board thing was.
Oh yeah, the assets.
It was by CLN upon income.
Yeah.
Are they gonna pay money or are we withholding money? Because I think we should withhold money.
Yeah, I think, well, I remember the asset one, the assets will be distributed proportionally. I think that was discussed at the last CIN meeting. But they're not supposed to have a lot of assets. The equipment is always owned by the members. It wasn't given an asset, sort of, but whatever assets they happen to have will be distributed proportionally. CIN fiscal agent can speak to what the differences between June and July will be, to my answer.
On the assets, they show they have zero property and equipment. Total property equipment is zero. They have a bank account. But I'm asking about the eBooks. Who owns them? Who owns them and how do we know they will be distributed equally? This was just somebody saying at a meeting. There's no, there's nothing in the JPA that says anything about that.
Yeah, so I can answer now. So, you know what I'm saying?
Oh yeah.
If it's lengthy discussion rest, since that's not a discussion point on the agenda, we can maybe make that part of a special meeting and we can just maybe go through to say, well, we want to the consent agenda. It may be approved with the exception of letter D, the CIN's financial statement. Because this might be a very, might be, I don't know. Unless you, do you expect it to be a one thing?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer some of the questions later, so.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
I think we should flat out not approve it. I don't know why. Why would you approve it?
Well, I'm saying, I'm just proposing maybe that we go ahead and approve the consent agenda with the exception of letter D, which is the CIN financial statement, until we get more clarification on these issues, because it's a big issue. I agree. I have a good point there. That's acceptable. Right, well, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Agenda number five with the exception of letter D, CIN financial statements.
So moved?
It has been moved to approve the consent agenda with the exception of letter D, CIN financial statement for the period of June 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against it? The ayes have it. The motion is approved and the consent agenda is approved with the exception of letter D. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the community library network, July 2025 financial statements. Trustee Robinson. We'll give you time.
I think there's a typo on page one of the balance sheet. So on the left-hand side, the headings, it says inns and net assets. I think it's supposed to be current liabilities and that's somehow chopped off, current liabilities and net assets.
Liability. Current.
I have a question. It's good on that. It's being noted, right? I just typed it up. And then I did like to see the fact that, I don't know why, most of the utilities in our expenses, line 6765 on down are below what we were budgeting for, so that's good to me. I noticed also the telecom, for some reason, unless there's a contract coming up right shortly here. It's only, we've only spent 20% of what we budgeted for. We should be up around 83% by now, so that's something, I don't know, the director wishes to address that or not. And I've also noted, I think we're following the format you, the director outline for us. For youth programs, is it, yes, youth programs, that's GL 605. I noticed that the actual is considerably higher than what we budgeted for, but it's probably grant money. Is that correct? Okay, so I'm seeing that now in our copy on numbers. And I do have one other main question here is, I'm looking at all of our revenues and a point of this, where we have 99.32% of the revenue we anticipated for this year. And yet, if I'm correct, line at a 400, the very first one, are we still owed another almost 400 and some $500,000 still from the county for this particular fiscal year? I guess I'll point that towards the director if you don't mind. Well, you'll have to tell her. With the board's permission, the assistant, and the business manager, I'm sorry, I'm addressing.
If you had a GL 400, 401, and 403, those totals are reflected in the $5,148,610 approved annual budget. So you would want to add all three of those together to see the shortfall and I'll be addressing that next month once I know for sure. We did receive a nice amount this month, but I'm not expecting $500,000 for August, September. We did receive a nice amount this month, but I'm not expecting five hundred thousand for August, September. We had almost a hundred thousand this month received.
So I'm looking at it correctly, then we are going to have more revenue coming in than we had budgeted for. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions? Yes.
Over this little bit.
Yeah, I didn't understand this question.
May I initially continue?
Oh, sorry. Yes, any more questions? Oh, hold on, trustee Ploss.
I wanted to ask questions about it, but maybe she can address while she goes over. Are you talking about, or I didn't see what you're called that, yeah.
So the, the business manager addresses trustee Robinson's concern first and then we'll go back to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you just want a little bit of an explanation of what this is?
Yeah.
Okay, so what you're referring to is the fiscal year twenty-five cash flow. This is something that Mr. Ploss had asked for a couple of years ago and we've been providing that. Like in January, we provided one. So here it is again, just kind of showing you with the green line, how our income comes in in January and then we slowly spend that down and then we get some more in the summertime, like July. So really what this is showing is a little bit different than the last one we gave in January because we actually have a report in our accounting software called Cash Flow. And I thought this might be what Mr. Ploss was asking for. And some CEOs like to see this because what it shows you is the difference between the beginning bank account balance and the ending bank account balance each month and the difference. So what you can kind of see there is in October first, two thousand twenty-four, at the beginning of the fiscal year, our general bank account that we pay our payroll and our invoices out of was a balance of thirty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. By the end of the month, we had sixty thousand, four hundred six dollars and sixty-one cents. So the difference is nine, you see there ninety-six thousand, six hundred three point five. So it added those together and shows you the difference of what, where we started and where we ended. And then each month you can see that the beginning balance and the end balance. And all this is, is money being transferred from the ICS savings account into the checking account to pay the bills. And it's just showing you the regular checking account, not the ICS account, just the checking account and where the beginning and ending balances and some of the differences. Hopefully it makes more sense to Mr. Ploss, but I ran the report for you.
Does that satisfy your question?
Well, on the chart for ten one twenty-four, why is the why is the, I guess where it says difference, it's just like at zero? If the beginning was thirty-six thousand and the end was sixty thousand. I guess I don't understand why on the chart that line isn't somewhere else or the bar isn't somewhere else.
Well, you see it's slightly above zero because it goes up by a hundred thousand. So we would have to have the graph by like ten thousand. So that is really slightly above zero, so that would be
Okay, honestly, I didn't actually look at how many zeros were on the, these tiny numbers, one, two, three. So that's, that first one is a million dollars.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Trustee Ploss.
I would actually say this is not very helpful.
I just don't think so either, but I thought maybe that's what she wanted.
My note on here was which account. It sounds like it's a checking, but you're not, we're not seeing how much was deposited and checking out of ICS. So if you were going to do this, it would be our sum of our checking and ICS is what I think. And I would prefer that it showed months instead of ten one, it would say just ten twenty-four. And I don't know why the beginning is the negative. It should be a positive number and the ending a positive number. The difference is beginning minus end or end minus begin, rather. But I think for this to be helpful, we need to show a sum of ICS plus the checking. Because what I was looking to see, I think, was in January twenty-fifth, to see this big three million dollar jump as a tax payment and you're not capturing that with the checking. And then us and then we would see how we're working it down and then a big chunk up. So what you would do if you added ICS together, whether you could see it go up and then it would progressively go down until July, then it'll go up and then go down. That's not what I was looking for, so.
I, you know, I tend to agree. It is our total cash on hand, whether it's our checking account or the sweep account. It should be the total amount of cash assets. And we can see it work up and then step down as we burn it. And then I think the big goal way back two years ago was how low does it actually get before payday? And it goes back up.
So what I'm hearing is that you really liked the report that was provided in January, which was manually calculated, taking all of that into consideration. Whereas this one was to see if you liked this better or if you'd rather we go back to the manually generated one where you combine everything so you can really see the lowest number. Thank you for that feedback.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, I understand. So trustee Ploss.
Go back on the balance sheet. Two things, one oh one, accounts receivable, eighty-seven thousand. That's current assets, so that's usually checks are in the mail or customers have paid or whatever. So what is eighty-seven thousand? Is that, I mean, it would only be coming the county, uh, trailer or something. And then the second is one forty-eight is still there. I brought it up one or two times before, property tax receivable. I don't know how that's different than accounts receivable, but I called the second time and I talked to Rosanna in the auditor's office. Catherine in Alicia's place, Alicia's not there anymore, that's who I talked to before. Catherine said they paid everything last month. They said they paid everything they go, you know, your library network. So she doesn't have any idea what this twenty-nine, two hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two is. And I asked Rosanna, because Catherine wasn't in there, and I explained it all. And she was going to try to get me an answer before the meeting, but I couldn't hear. But what I'm asking for them to do is work with the business manager to figure this out. I think the answer I got before was, well, that was on the books from the previous business manager. If, if it doesn't exist, I mean, it's too bad we don't have it, but if it doesn't exist, it was a mistake. We need to get it out, whatever the audit or the county assessor says, get it off of there and balance the books. I don't know if you take it off, I don't know what are changes on our assets, but we don't really have it. Anyway, maybe you can comment if you heard anything from the auditor's office, because I did ask about it.
Initially, if the board does not object.
Thank you. I'm actually working with Catherine Clancy, I believe is who you're referring to, via email. We've been emailing back and forth, not on this issue, but another, via Vista Judgment stuff. And thank you for letting me know you spoke with Rosanna, that she's replaced Alicia, that's helpful information. Oh, Catherine. Okay.
Catherine wasn't in, I told.
Great. So I'm currently editing the auditor's narrative for fiscal year twenty-four and myself and the bookkeeper are giving email responses to the auditor as we go through the adjusting journal entries. And this is exactly one of the things we're trying to address. So I'm glad that you did your part to work with the county and that they want to help us get this resolved. So the plan is to get this resolved before the auditor comes, hopefully next month to give her report.
Do you have any further discussion on the CLN's financial statements? Trustee Ploss.
I appreciate that you, the business manager, put it on the last sheet to carry forward calculation. I've, I've saved three or more different calculations of it from the previous business manager and I'm a little confused basically what she did every time with the ICS balance, the checking balance, added it up. That's the available liquid funds. And then she subtracted accounts payable, restricted funds, which I assume was well, sometimes she broke it out as grants and CARF. But this one I'm looking at from twenty-three, December twenty-three, said restricted funds. So that, so those were funds that were in ICS. So that's why she subtracted them and then she subtracted the estimate for the remaining months. And then there was some capital expenditures going on. But I see on what you've got here, you're adding in on the very top on the total, you're adding in capital asset, the CARF or the CARF fund. And I don't see anything about grants, but I thought CARF was in ICS. So I don't know why we're adding it in again. And then we can turn around and subtract it down below, which it should be subtract, but I don't think, I don't think we should add it in. And I don't know where the grants went and I don't know if we have the pinehurst request, if it is.
It's in there.
No, is it in ICS or is it in a separate fund? So if it's in a separate fund that we don't do anything with, I don't, it shouldn't be part of the sheet is what I would suggest. So it looks like we're adding in several things, CARF, I'm a pinehurst request and I don't know if it's in ICS already. And if it is, why are we adding it a second time and then subtracting? Anyway, I've got some I don't, I don't think it's quite right yet.
Do I have a question? Is, is it a question really? Does the ICS, that's the second line I know, when they carry forward, is that including the pinehurst request and the CARF money? Or are you not, are they broken out separately? I guess that's definitely, if that's what you're asking, I can see that making an issue. So is it, is it listed twice or is it already in the sweep, the issue of the ICS? If it is, then yeah, we're adding it twice. Is that, is that your question?
Well, if it's in ICS, we shouldn't add it. We should subtract it if it's in ICS. But if we're adding it in, it's not ICS, yeah, we should
I can ask the business manager or the director. Isn't we add it twice or is it, are they? The section. Yeah.
They're separate bank accounts. Pinehurst has its own bank account and the, you'll notice on the balance sheet, under other assets, ICS, GL one-ten, that's basically our sweep account or a savings. CARF, GL one-twenty, that's a separate bank account, five hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. GL one-twenty-five, Mountain West Money Market, Pinehurst Request, that's a separate bank account. Now, GL one-ninety-nine, the amount to provide for long-term debt, that is within the ICS, that's not a separate bank. And so that's why you don't see that on the carry floor. The intention of the carry forward worksheet is to show the board absolutely everything that the library owns to be transparent. And the discrepancy that you're seeing from the previous business manager is just a difference in perspective on how much to share with the board. So the intent is to lay all the cards on the table so you see the bottom line. So you can see here, there's the checking account balance, you have the ICS funds, you have the CARF account, which is separate and the Pinehurst account, which is separate. So that's all our assets, which you see on that green sheet is just over four billion. And then the rest, we pull out the fact that Pinehurst is a restricted fund as well as CARF. So one, it's an asset, but then two, it's restricted. So we can't say that's the bottom line because we can't use that money except for what it's restricted for. As far as the restricted grant money that is actually being addressed with the auditor for fiscal year twenty-four and we are unrestricted those funds because they were restricted in the past, but didn't really meet grant qualifications. And so there are really more donations. And so the director and the assistant director, myself, are working through that with staff and with the friends who needed to donate some money.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I would suggest we don't need to to deal with those other accounts. We're just trying to calculate what, how much money do we have going forward? So I would just do the checking and the ICS and then subtract off you know, the accounts payable, the estimated for the rest of the year and then and not with CARF and, but ICRAF is in that ICS, so you definitely need to subtract that. So I agree there. I didn't understand on the budgeted expenditures, the Harrison ramp. I thought it was done, I thought we walked on it. But we got ninety thousand that we're subtracting out like it's still has to be paid or set aside. That was just another question.
If you don't mind, can I wait or tell him? I quite like this carry forward report, like one of them that ate up from top to bottom. I thought it was a good exposure to everything that need that asset wise as far as money, but if you don't mind addressing trustee Ploss's question.
I'm happy to not include the Pinehurst and CARF accounts if you don't find that's valuable.
I like it.
I like it.
I like it.
I like it. So what are the
You lose.
The board, well, whatever the director tells me to do, I will follow.
Well, I think the board as a whole just now indicated, we like it. Trustee Ploss can cross down his copy each time. No, not to be fine, but it looks like you were overridden a little bit. You have more questions?
Yeah, I was hoping to get an answer about the Harrison, why there's ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. I guess it held for that. I'm not going to be locked on the ramp.
It is finished and it is paid off. That's something that the auditor is going to capitalize. So what that means is that ninety-nine, ninety thousand dollars is not available as a bottom line number. It has to be adjusted into the capital line item. And so that's something we're working with the auditor. So I just didn't want to show you that there was an extra ninety thousand that really wasn't there.
Does that go back to CARF?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's just an auditing thing.
Okay. All right, we had a key little, go ahead.
But I don't, what I'm seeing here is what's being subtracted from our yeah, check accounts and I don't, if it's just moving it in the books, I don't think it should be there because you're not subtracting it from ICS or the checking accounts. If you've already paid it, I don't think it should be on here. But that's an accounting thing that you have to move it, but it shouldn't be subtracting available funds.
I'll verify that with the auditor.
Yeah, you do that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the C I N financial report for the period ending July, is it out there, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five? No?
Yes.
So
One last thing, I had asked for the bottom line above the heavy line just to be called carried forward because that's really what the calculation is, to carry forward. It's not the available to assign, to expenditures or emergencies. It's this, this whole calculation is to calculate that number, which is called to carry forward. So I would
So just a terminology, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it is, carried forward.
Okay, the question is on approving the financial report for the C I N for the period ending July thirty-first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I had emotions about the financial report for the period ending July thirty-first, so CLN is approved. And I guess I didn't look at the what it should be of the unit, but okay. I think it's time for the director to report.
All right, I'll read Harrison lease. We have the answers to the last questions voted by the board. Ranger is willing to sign a twenty-year lease as a provisional term, if that's the one person. So they had ten and So they had ten and you asked about, um, ten versus twenty, so why there's an option. Uh, the eight thousand and seven, the eight thousand and seven dollars was based on the square footage of the land. The goal made is a dollar seventy two to two seventy five per square foot. Uh, the Grange gave us the discounted price of a dollar fifty seven per square foot multiplied by five thousand one hundred square feet, which totaled eight thousand and seven dollars. So others, the few answers to the questions posed at the last meeting. Um, we will have these prepared for September agenda for us to move on. Uh, C I N dissolution update. Uh, so we're providing our patients with current information that develops. We created web page on our website. Also, you've seen that C L N is very pictured. It's prominently displayed on our website's landing page. My I T and tech services department are working diligently to ensure a smooth transition to October first. Probably thanking a whole bunch of time, but yeah, probably need to thank them and working very hard, very short timeline to, to get this done. Uh, some of the main projects are, we're cleaning up patient records. Uh, the goal here obviously to confirm taxing district boundaries. Uh, I will bring to the next meeting a non-resident card policy for the trustees to review. Uh, the other big thing obviously is overdrive. At the C I N meeting, um, it was agreed that we were split the overdrive collection between two agencies. C L N, C D A, or the Link Public. At the time, um, they bandaged about various ratios. The C I N fiscal agent, um, produced a report which showed sixty three percent C L N, thirty seven percent C D A. But then the president, uh, the chair of, uh, C I N felt that they should tie in usage statistics and not just financial contribution. So they did that. Uh, anyway, we've all agreed, um, as much as a, he can agree, uh, in a formal way. Uh, we agreed on a sixty forty split. So the C L N will be getting sixty percent of the collection. Uh, and then Portland public will get forty percent. I had no knowledge of I L G. I don't know what I L G is doing. So as far as I'm concerned, Portland is getting now to forty percent and they were responsible for providing that to the rest of the members. So as far as C L N is concerned, we're getting sixty percent. Uh, for my tech services department, that kind of means roughly, there's twenty three thousand, two hundred and one active titles. In overdrive, uh, sixty percent would be roughly thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty titles. And so we're going to be doing a randomized, um, splitting of that collection based on various categories. There's different metered content within overdrive, so some of the content is metered by time. Some of it's metered by how many checkouts it has. There's also the one cup, the one user. So there's different ways that overdrive handles the content. And we'll be looking at, uh, my tech services department along with Portland's tech service department. We're looking at various categories of each of these items and randomizing the split according to those categories. So in the end, uh, we'll have thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty roughly, uh, items to, to launch our, our own, um, E resources collection. So which is a positive, which is a very good thing. Uh, but also a couple of positives about that is the, obviously we can. Quite, uh, quickly turn our attention to the potential of unrestricted the minor cards access to E resources. Obviously that was a big issue, um, because on our policy, we were restricting E resource access. But now that it'll be our collection, we can move forward unrestricted it because we'll have the ability to carry our collection as we see fit. Um, I also want to mention one thing is, uh, I'm not sure if it, I think someone might have mentioned at some point in public comment in the past. But I just, I just want to remind everyone, it's important to note that the loss of material from the twenty twenty four water damage was eighty seven percent audio visual material. So we lost about eight hundred and ninety five books. Uh, but we lost six thousand, two hundred and seventy audio visual, which was, I mean, in case of the water burst over, which have the CDs and D V Ds. So, uh, I mean, that's important because this is what this other fifty thousand dollars in E resources. You know, uh, you certainly in libraries, it's almost migration away from certain formats. So the chances of us moving towards electronic version, uh, E online version or virtual versions of music versus compact discs. I had lost libraries that didn't keep compact discs anywhere. So, so just, I'm just throwing that out there so we realize what the reality is as far as what we're trying to replace with our collection money. Um, and so, so having, having thirteen thousand items to kick off our own collection of E resources is very helpful. Um, because that was the bulk of what we lost during the, uh, during the, the water damage. Another big aspect of the dissolution is the courier. C L, C L N courier will be ready to go on October first. The job description is only Jennifer Day and the position was filled internally. Also very excitingly, uh, we are working on having, uh, new C L N branded library cards ready for October first. Uh, so cards, maybe librarians get kind of excited, well, these similar cards like one of the key visual identity and branding, you know, marketing things of a library. So, uh, it's probably, you know, it was a C L N card with C I N branding on it. So this gives us the opportunity to, to rebrand our cards. We're going to have our very own C L N cards. We'll have our first run, which may be limited, uh, due to timing, uh, first run from October first through to the end of the year. But then with twenty twenty six comes the fiftieth anniversary, that'll be a great opportunity to market the cards in a certain way. So we're pretty excited. That's kind of thing librarians like. Uh, we're going to have a nice new library card for our patients. Uh, collection development manager hired internally. Uh, she's settling in, uh, there's a bit of transition work. And this goes way back to when I first got her, because we had the collection development person who wore three hats, tech services and supplies in the district. So just unpacking some of that now that we have the person in place is happening. Uh, two immediate projects, um, obviously the, the, uh, hundred and forty titles, uh, for lack of a better descriptor, are being transferred, uh, from my office to her office. Uh, be much more convenient if we all shared the same building, but just split up. So I have to send it across town to Hayden. Um, maybe it's that box up and then you can go over her office where she can, uh, she can go work on the final. Finalizing reclassification of those materials as needed. And then the other project I've started working on is sort of the geographic work for the classics children's literature project. So this is where I do the librarian thing and do geographic analysis of, of, of classic children's literature. I'll get the authors, get the lists of, of items. And eventually this will pass on to the collection development manager and she and I will work together on making our children's collection, uh, sort of top body and known for its, uh, its breadth of, of classic literature. Uh, strategic plan, last thing, uh, total survey is taken as of, uh, today. So as of eight twenty, um, let's see, uh, one thousand and four. So I think the last time they did it, when we outsourced a couple of years ago, we're seven hundred and something. So we're, we're quite positive about the surveys we've had taken. So one thousand and four as of eight twenty stakeholder conversations, there are fourteen. Focus groups held are eight with a total attendees of twenty eight and there's six more focus group scheduled in August and September. And then we've had, um, community events that were attended by my communication department, our eleven, not including the six days so far at the fair. And we've had one thousand, six hundred and forty nine community member conversations. Uh, at those community events, there's seven hundred and one conversations had so far, the fair is still four days to go. So we're, uh, my communications department worked very hard on, on making sure we get the kind of data we need. And right now we're quite satisfied. This data gathering phase will go until, uh, October. And then when fiscal year kicks in, we'll, we'll start moving into the analysis phase. And then we'll be bringing in someone to help facilitate, uh, boards and staff retreats to, to formulate goals and objectives. And then eventually publish it in a year or so. And that is it.
Does any have any questions to the director and report? Yes.
Did you say the courier position has been filled?
Yeah, internally.
Okay.
Uh, I had only one question. It was on the, um, patron usage on the front page on the bottom left. I was just curious, last month, um, we had seventy six percent of the people that went to our website were new users. And this month, this report, seventy eight percent of the people are new users. So I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from, but how did, how did we have? Almost everybody seems to be a new user on our website. It's not our highest number of views, we'll call it. That looks like, um, what is it called there? Facebook was very, very high, yeah, a hundred thousand. But I think it's, I just don't understanding how we have almost everybody's a new user that goes to our website for two months in a row. So they all leaving and all new problems in it, I don't know. So it's overly important, but I'm just curious how that could be.
Uh, I will, um, my communication person is here, but I'll, I'll speak to her after and then I'll get the information for you next time. So we can unpack what those stats mean.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Are the policy revisions due to C I N dissolution? Uh, I'm the person that put that on the agenda, more or less working with the director. It was always, I see your hand one moment. And I saw it through, I figured out why it was in the financial management manual. There's a lot of verbiage in there regarding the C I N. Well, that's not going to apply in another two months or so, whoever's down to. Trustee, please.
Hi, I'm sorry. I, I did have a question about the director's report.
Go ahead.
So hopefully this is something quick. Uh, is the Corlin Press not printing our press releases anymore? Because I've searched on their website, not been able to find them.
As far as I know, they, they, I've only done two, I think, since I've been here. I don't think either were.
Neither one, I've never seen either.
But we, we send it to them, obviously it's a press release and they're the press, they get to release if they like. Uh, I guess they don't like.
So we're doing our best to keep it public informed and they're not cooperating, I assume. So we, we're getting out.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, we're not getting out to that publication. Okay, um, going back to this one here. So what I saw was information in the financial management manual, do it to C I N, not emergency, but we probably need to scrub that at some point because it won't be valid anymore. And I want to expand this one a little bit, uh, this, this item on the agenda. Uh, when it comes to physician or job description, I happened to look at the director's job description. And there's discussion on there about the C I N as well. I don't know any other, um, physicians could have it, but, um, so just so the board understands where I'm coming from. There's material addressing C I N in policies or at least one or two. And it's also at least one job description. So what I'm asking for there is for the director and staff to go through our policies and our job descriptions. And to see what needs to be adjusted and changed. And at some point bring forth, uh, suggested draft changes to the policies and. Is everyone okay with that? Very good. We finished that on the agenda. Next is E courier, job description discussion. We all got a copy in our package. I don't have any comments on it. Anyone else have anything that does stop for that?
I just have a couple of questions.
Please go ahead.
Um, page three, second to last on the bottom. Um, I understand why they would need a driver's license, but why do they need automobile insurance? Because I would assume that they would be insured through the library. I just don't know if that needs to be there, like if that person doesn't have their own car, they wouldn't have auto insurance.
The board's okay, assistant director, go ahead.
That statement is adding to all of our newer job descriptions. And essentially if they are driving their personal vehicle for some reason for the library, they need to have insurance to be covered under our policy.
So, okay, so if they're in their own, okay. And then on page four, the second one. Uh, and I know this is already, it's already filled anyway, but, um, the two years, um, in transportation or delivery service. I don't know if that would have to be a job description. I'm just saying it might like narrow the, uh, the amount of people that would qualify.
Oh, the person internally had been doing this.
It's very convenient.
Yeah, they were delivering, um, library materials in a, uh, huge capacity size. Yeah, whether it needs to be.
Yeah.
Is it acceptable to support assistant director? Okay.
They did a comparison of multiple, or courier, library courier jobs. And they all had something like that because you need someone who can, um, who have a good driving record and who can navigate and manage their time on the road independently. And so that was a really good statement to put in to ensure we're getting those kind of candidates.
Okay. Thank you.
And a couple of bullets down below that it'll say any equivalent combination of experience and training, which provides knowledge and abilities necessary to perform the work. So that wouldn't necessarily completely prohibit someone. Okay, and I did have a couple of questions on page two and three, and I think they're related. Uh, the fourth bullet point down says models positive district message to members and staff. Um, I'm assuming that means patrons. And I think that's what we have in other policies is that they're called patrons. Or am I getting it backwards?
Assistant director did the lion's share of drafting this all and let her happen.
We have documents with member patrons, customers. So we as a unit need to decide what our name is for the people who visit the library. Cause it's all over the place.
Okay, yeah, I think at one time we had discussed going forward that everything would be patrons, I think. And then, so that would be the same for bullet point number five on, actually I should have said page three. Uh, bullet point number five that says working relationships with members. And that would be changed to patrons of us, what we did indeed decide. That's all I had.
Well, I like patrons as well. So are we gonna, are we making a decision to change that though? We are. Is everyone okay with changing the wording to patrons to, to two different places? Just got to hand that up.
In general, like across the board.
Yes.
For, for all policies, call them patrons.
They're not really, we don't have a club.
Okay, so okay, then we'll go ahead with, with members. I'm sorry. Do you have something else? Just, just be boss.
Um, so. I like to see the requirements put right up front, basically job description. And I don't, there's a position summary, but I. I, I would like to set a position requirement down at the very bottom. I think it should be right up front. That wasn't more than something to follow. I, I would like to see added to position requirements, something. We're looking for somebody, and maybe it's acceptable, I don't know. To go a little beyond, um, ability to optimize their routes. I don't want somebody picking the slowest route so they can take the amount of, most amount of time. And they should get demerits of, it's in the description and they aren't doing it. I, I don't know whether it's to follow Google Maps, but I didn't, Google Maps was, but there should be something that they should be optimizing. In college, I took a course that had a skew, the simplex algorithm. And it was travel and salesman to find the shortest route of all the paths, but, um. So something that is getting them to take on a little bit more. And maybe it would include in-house sorting or processes. If they, if they're the ones doing the job and they know how the boxes should be filled. Maybe they can improve the processes. So if they always, if he's describing that the box is a weight too heavy, maybe he goes to smaller boxes or something. Or there's certain size of books that should go in certain order or something to make his delivery go easier. As I'm just looking for kind of a stretch goal, be added ability to optimize routes and in-house sorting and processing, something like that.
Is that a doable fix? Is that a doable fix?
I mean, it is, I would just say the, the formatting of our job solutions are similar across the board. So we would move one section up here, maybe to make it all harmonious across all of them. So that's kind of the words. And as far as the insurance, I mean, I, everything that you're saying. Will not come into play when we start talking about the roots themselves. But I don't think this person is given sort of hands off, do whatever you want. They're going to be structured based on, and that's what we're doing through September to October first is analyzing. Cause we know, we always have to have career to do, to do another thing. So now we have an in-house courier, we can actually optimize. So I'm also with the optimization and the finer details of the kind of contribution this person could make to the organization would be in here. But it's going to happen, it's going to happen in the context of the conversations. This person will fall in the technical services department. So they'll report to the technical services manager, then to Venzi, to me. So that stuff will happen. I just don't know what it needs to be in here, but a huge bullet point to satisfy that we can.
Just, yeah, just a stretch goal, kind of get, get them involved in is what I'm looking at.
So besides just changing members to patrons, is that the only change? Then we're agreeing to the, the job description. Okay, I guess it is. Any further discussion on this? Right time. Uh, it's now three ten, pardon me.
Out to the next item.
Is that? Okay, did everyone agreeable to just making a change of. Okay, is everyone agreeable to just making a change of changing members over to patrons? Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Okay, we have consensus, so the only change we're making is members over to patrons.
You're approving it as a fifty?
Yes, do we, we approve it, okay.
I guess I move that we.
As a, as a method, pardon me?
Yes, so.
Yes, yes. Physician description is approved as a method. And now we're taking a break, a break for 10 minutes, so we'll be back in the room at three twenty. Double check that. Yes, one. It's very funny, I mean, you want to come back, I wonder. He's started now, sorry. Maybe I'm lost again again, it's three twenty one, the meeting will come to order. Next item on the agenda is trustee training. The board was given an email from our council, and so the time allotted for that was fifteen minutes for this training. So if you read through the court case, it was to do with schools, but he's saying there's some connection there, as we could see in terms of how it would apply to libraries. If you go through that, you'll be spending more than fifteen minutes at home for training, because it's about a lengthy case. So it's recommended that everyone read through that, get a flavor for the Supreme Court case that was emailed to you. So we'll leap along to the next item on here, which is the Vista judgment levy. It's potentially confusing, and I wrote, I wrote my own summary here, I'm going to go through it real fast. Property assessments and appeals are generally done by the county assessor. But for a number of large, they call it operating property, companies, the assessments and appeals take place at the state level. In this case, it was Idaho Power and a Vista, they were part of a lawsuit for tax years 2020, 2021, and 2022. Essentially, again, I'm reading this my own spin on these two or three letters that were here in a spreadsheet or two. Essentially, the state lost the case, and it appears that Idaho Power and a Vista were overcharged for their property taxes, are entitled to a tax refund or a credit from the county. These refunds have already been paid by Cootney County. Additionally, there was some type of an error made by the Cootney County Treasurer's Office in 2021 regarding homeowners exemptions. The bottom line is, and we are reading this thing, it's a CLN's piece of the pie, the payback for us, is our small portion of the overall county, the entity, is $23,000, twenty-three thousand, three seventy-three and seventy-four cents. And it's already been withheld from our July distribution from the county, if I understood the business manager's memo correctly. So it appears to me we have three options available to us. They're outlined halfway down the letter, dated July 25th, on the Cootney County Clerk's Office, signed by Alicia Lynch. So here's more opinion, these amigos, I don't think we should spend a lot of time wasted on discussing the legal merits of the case, and instead, let's just focus on the three options we have available to us, which regard that it's $23,000 and change. That's my little miniature spiel, I don't think I will correct, but that was my interpretation. Trustee plus.
I think we need to correct your summary, it's twenty-five, it's the sum of Shoshone and Cootney, so it's $25,891. And my take on it is, the assessor's office figured out everybody's bill based on the sum of all the budgets that they get approved, submitted, so he's got a fixed number, and he divides it up to the taxpayers, but his fixed number was lower for the, I mean, the tax, all of the taxpayers except the Vista, the number was lower because the Vista was paying more those years. So the taxpayer's got a lower amount on their bill because the Vista got more, and they, and they have to raise the exact amount, that, or try to raise the exact amount, so the taxpayer's already got their discount. We, we are just coming back to even out.
We don't pay Shoshone's bill, is that correct?
If we bring up Shoshone, just have it.
We, we have Shoshone taxpayers, and Shoshone County is part of the deal, or part of Shoshone County's seal land, and those taxpayers are paying, it's part of the seal industry.
So is the money we're shorted to $23,000 and change plus the Shoshone? Okay, that's my, okay, I missed that part, okay, getting past that, we have three options, the way I see it here. We either suck it up and absorb it, as we just don't get that money in terms of what we enter July, we're going forward, or we can split it up into two different years, or we can take it in one year. So I'll give you another opinion, one of the reasons I asked if we are expecting to exceed our revenue beyond what we had budgeted for, in fact, we are talking about the financial statements for C O M, the answer is yes, we are, so it's my opinion that instead of levying more money against the taxpayer, I think we could just absorb it, I think we can afford to absorb it, that's my opinion, so I'm open for discussion here.
Trustee plus. One thing, maybe it'll be in the letter someplace, but if we take this $25,000 as a raise our tax base, or is the tax base really separate and it's based on the two, whatever the two percent or the three percent is? I, I think $25,891 is, it's off to the side, it's not affecting the tax base. So next year, if we took two percent or one percent, if you based on, it wouldn't include this amount. Can somebody answer that?
Yeah, I think it's separate, but the business manager and current, but it's a separate decision. I think if you choose the three percent and the choice to levy the Vista, then you might, you would exceed. You, you're not allowed to exceed your full amount, which is three percent, so if you say yes to the levy, and yes to three percent, you'd exceed. If you say yes to the levy and you take two percent, you won't exceed, because you published a three. If you took 2.5 percent and the levy, you wouldn't exceed, because you asked for three percent. And so the only real scenario that you have probably gets to concern is that if you took the levy and three percent, then you really wouldn't be getting the benefit of the levy, because you would be exceeding the maximum amount. You're not allowed to exceed your maximum amount, so basically that would, you'd have to, obviously it's your decision, but I won't think about it in terms of the other decision later tonight, which is the two percent and three percent, because the decision about this kind of has something to do with that, not just something, but, right? So you, you could theoretically take 2.5 percent and this levy, and then the library would be, as if, this is about $50,000. Twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's a half a percent, yeah, right? Anybody else besides trustee plus? Trustee, power down.
How does it affect us if we absorb it? Do you have anything?
Just get less money, but.
Do you have something specific that, about how it would affect us?
The director?
Well, again, business manager can jump in at the force approval, but anyway, because it's actually been deducted from the July payment, if we absorb it, we'd be absorbing it with projected year ends of this year. Like, it's not going to affect fiscal year, I mean, it can, but we've already got the deduction on the July payment. So as we look, I mean, as we, if we were pour over line by line, we could see we're short on this, we're short on that. Our projected year ends is where we would absorb it, right? The reduction's already been made.
Trustee plus?
Yeah, I, I think it's real clear, the money that is in our bank account right now would have been $25,000 higher. That we didn't get, they already took it. The second paragraph of Alicia Lynch's paragraph or letter, which was actually a year ago, 2024, she doesn't work there anymore. I think that's different than what the director's saying, your district can opt to add the levy under exam portions of the L two dollar certification form, which is not voter approved and does not event your district's maximum allowable increases. I read that, that you can take three percent and still take this.
That's how I read it as well.
Yeah, I think she's pretty clear there, whether we do that or not, because then we're going, it's basically, it's a half percent, we were $50,000 per one percent, so we're back by another half percent.
So we theoretically, I guess, could be at three and a half percent if it proves, you know, not taking, not swallowing the. Trustee Robinson?
Oh, are you done? So can we get that cleared out, because that's how I read it, that it was separate? And we were just told that they're combined.
Well, I know referring to the last paragraph, where the judgment levy is not increasing maximum level, but all funds on your L two combined cannot be higher than what you published. So that's, I'm, yeah, I'm referring to that aspect.
Ah.
Yeah, look, had you published two, you would have tied your hands completely, but you published three.
Yeah, we did.
So, so that, I was referring to that paragraph, I'll do one of both.
Okay, interesting.
One thing, and so if we're not taking three percent, it's a non-issue. Trustee, person?
Uh, so I was inclined to do a two percent increase, and to make sure that the library's good with this amount, so we could just do the two and a half percent to cover this money that's already been spent, and so that we're not jeopardizing operations.
Okay, trustee Robinson?
Does the trustee saying, absorb that?
Absorb it.
And go with 2.5? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, sort of, but I mean, it's the thing, it works out to be the same as doing two percent to end the, then the levy.
Right, I just want to be clear though, you're saying, don't do a levy on this.
Total amount would be two and a half percent, I'm just assuming that that's easier to deal with than re-advertising, putting a levy out there.
People want to call me, they might like to give everybody a fair chance, you know, it'll take a little time. So, I think we need to totally be upfront and recognize, I totally disagree about taking two and a half percent, ignoring this. We need to take this, what this paragraph at the bottom is talking about is the dollar amount, I don't think it's talking about percent. But we said we would basically take a dollar amount, the funds, is what it's saying, not the percent. So the amount of funds we take can't be higher than what, does that make sense? Okay, so I think we should take two percent and take this that the the county has already billed us for, and we don't have to tell them, but I mean, we can put out a press release or something, but I, I think it should be very visible that we're doing a certain percent, and we're dealing with this. I do not like to not deal with this.
Trustee Robinson?
Can it be explained exactly, because I mean, I read it, but just to clarify, if we, I guess, I'll use the term took this money, or didn't just absorb it, we would have to do like a new, like a little mini levy?
I think we will have.
Again, jumping in from the wrong, but basically, you don't have to do it, you just have to make a decision here, it doesn't go public, it's not a, it's not a public board. You can just make the decision now, which one of these three you want to do. On the L two, it'll show up on the L two in a location as a number. It doesn't impact your decision with the other one, but on the L two, your total number that you ask for can't exceed what you published. I think there was one of these documents, it was talking about the ability to be published, you're allowed, you're allowed within the statute to be published. But you must do so to recoup it either this year or split out, so, I mean, we do have the ability to publish, I think, it's within our time that it republish will be published, but that would only be if you were going to go with three percent, and if the number on the L two exceeded the number that was published. But I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's fair to say that choosing not to levy is ignoring it. That is a choice, one of the choices, don't levy it, levy it over one year, levy it over two years.
And take that here, go ahead, trustee, I always stumble here, where the white, I know who you are, I know you.
So, I, if I figured it out right, that I think most homes would, it would cost less than a dollar for their taxes for the year, if, if we do charge this, and I actually, I think that maybe I was trying to oversimplify things, and I think trustee plus is probably right. It would be more transparent to taxpayers if we did two percent and the levy instead.
So I'm hearing a lot of, I think option one, is that correct? Choosing to levy for the full judgment? You're enough of you, I think, is that where?
Yeah, I think that sounds good, with the two percent.
So I see pretty agreement, so if we got to recording there, I think the board is going ahead with option one, to choose the levy for the full judgment for the taxing. Oh, stop, hold the presses, go ahead.
I move that we levy, or have our, have a two percent tax increase and levy the full amount, option one.
It's not on the budget yet, we're not on the budget, we're just on this.
We're not going to choose this if somebody else is going to go three percent, I want it, I want it coupled. I move the two together, that we take the option one, which is a little bit over a half percent, and we choose two percent, I'm not doing a budget, I mean, doing the budget is still the line items, where I'm just talking about picking the percent, so I have a motion to do two percent plus the option one.
Oh, point of order. Exactly.
Please, order.
So these are two separate agenda items, two separate action items, and I don't think we can do them together, but I'm, I'm in agreement with your sentiment, but as far as the motion, I don't, I think the motion is out of order.
The chair rules, the, if where water's taken, whatever it's called, randomly, where?
Well taken.
Well taken, there you go, I didn't memorize all my rules yet. So, are you ready to be handled?
I was gonna, I was gonna do a point of order as well, see?
Okay, so, I don't want to do a conditional approval on this with, to do with the budget, go ahead, trustee plus.
The, the budget discussion is going through the line items, all of the line items of everything. It isn't saying you're picking your percent. The budget is, I, I intend to go through the line items still, for a final budget. That's one. Agenda thirteen has.
We're on agenda twelve. And I'm, and I'm not going through all of the line items, I'm saying just picking the percent is not going through the budget line items.
Point of order.
Please, point of order.
The same as trustee Odison, it's already been spoken to.
Chair rules, yeah, point of order is taken favorably, that that right worked?
That works.
Pardon me?
It doesn't have to be exact.
Just, so I think we should perceive that for me wants to make a motion to, you're gonna make a motion, don't, don't make me make it.
I, I move that we take option one from the, from random, to choose to levy the full judgment amount in T Y 2024.
Okay, it is moved, is it moved to approve option one on the Cootney County Clerk's letter or memorandum for tax year 2024. There's a further discussion on that. Hearing none, all those in papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You guys have it, the board has, the, it has had the motion is approved, we've chosen option one on this memorandum. Moving on, yeah. Moving on to the next item, which is the, uh, this here, the budget, it's the dessert of the meatloaf here. I have a dissertation, if you call it there, I have a few things to say about the budget before we go into a major discussion. Today is the sixth time this board has met to discuss Lydson, which was the budget hearing, and redefine the fiscal year 2026 budget, and the C L N's bright future ahead. Additionally, some of most of us have spent a number of hours analyzing the budget at home. First, I'd like to express my appreciation for the time and effort the director, assistant director, business manager have put into the initial draft and the successive drafts. Thank you. Second, I'd like to address trustee plus. Second, I'd like to address trustee plus's suggestion that ICRIM funds, uh, spent on physical collections be reflected on a separate new GL coded expenditures line item. In my opinion, this would be inconsistent with the way we'll be tracking grants and some other funds. For transparency and future year budget planning purposes, I support the director's suggestion that all actual expenditures, regardless of the revenue source, be reflected on a specific expenditure GLI item receiving the funds. Third, there are a number of reasons why I see it as necessary that the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget be larger than this current fiscal year. And then finally provide some of my rationale. I've got one to teach for about five different bullet points here. To a certain degree, the CLN will be impacted by the dissolution of the CIN. My goal is to ensure that CLN's patrons will continue to have a robust quality collection available to them. The CLN will not just survive this little bump in the road, it will thrive. Next bullet, the majority of the trustees on this board hired our current director, Martin Walters. I believe he has a clear vision for where he would like to take the CLN, and I would like to do my part as best possible to financially support him and the evolving future five-year strategic plan. Bullet, bullet point number three, inflation is a very real issue we must take into consideration. The undue expansion of the fiat money supply means that salaries must increase just to maintain a given level of compensation. The same applies to utilities, materials, software, services, et cetera. In respect, in response to concerns expressed by patrons, next fiscal year, the CLN will be expanding its open time by twenty-two hours. And this, of course, has an associated cost. And finally, in this bullet list, as trustees, it is our job to ensure the district has adequate resources to operate its services. As I see it, we as trustees are advocates for the success of the library network, while also being diligent representatives of the taxpayers who fund it. In conclusion, in order to fund CLN's bright future, I'm suggesting this board consider a two percent increase as reflected in the fourth budget draft. The end. Okay, no, no more pause please. Um, who else has something to say and discuss? Only, I guess we're working with the fourth budget draft. And I'm sure trustee trust has something to say. Anybody have commentary in this session? You want it? Trustee plus, I'll wait, nobody else?
So. I was starting to mark up. If I could do more, but, um, what I handed out, we've added twenty-five thousand, eight ninety-one to the two percent. And what? What I abhor is this idea, it's a shell game. I abhor it, that I print money is gonna come into materials, materials money is gonna stay the same, but basically we're just gonna shift it around and over here, we're gonna do, the bottom line's gonna be the same because we're doing this rent or whatever it is. Or if we go to three percent, more I print money comes in and the, the material stays the same, but it basically goes someplace else, it's a shell game. And it's bad accounting. I don't know the proper way, I wanted to show it as a separate line item, is I want to see the I print money. Any extra I print money we decide to spend goes to physical collections or goes to some kind of collections. It's a shell game to keep collections the same and take money I print and just have disappear somewhere in there in the, uh, budget. So what I'm, I'm asking is the budget that I handed out last time shows specifically that the difference, or not increase I print, it's the same all the way through. We want to do sixty thousand, we want to do seventy thousand, whatever, it's the same and it goes to collections, because that's where it's supposed to go. It's not supposed to be in a shell game and end up down here paying for rent or something else. So I am suggesting rent's an easy thing to pick on. If we got an extra twenty-five thousand, keep I print the same, then, um, you end up with, you end up at two percent, you end up with ninety-five thousand going to the rental for office space. And I think we can afford to wait a couple of months and just make that number smaller. I don't think we should be making collections smaller and taking nine, ninety-six thousand out of, out of, um, I print just to make up the difference when we're not really giving it extra. So I'm, I'm asking that we reduce something else to make it, but the balanced budget, and I'll hand out the rest of my markups.
Trustee option.
Uh, I think we just understand things differently, it makes sense to me and I don't see it as a shell game, it's just the director wants to keep things consistent and, uh, we could use the whole I print in one year, or we could spread it out over several years and, and I like his plan.
Yeah, and my understanding, I'm back and listening to the last regular meeting, I think it was, and I think the, the director's goal was to spread out the I print money, which is specifically going to be used only for collections, but make it last over a number of years between what we got on the budget here, so that we have a steady amount of money, a consistent predictable amount of money coming in to help support collections over a longer period of time, over a couple of years. I can't speak for you, that was my understanding. Would you, trustee plus?
But it's not going to support collections, no matter what we do. It, collections are staying the same, but yet we're taking more I print, so it obviously is a shell game. We're taking more money from I print, but it's not increasing the, the, uh, collections. I don't understand why, can't see that. If we're taking more money from I print, hundred and sixty-three thousand instead of fifty thousand, that's collection should be going up by hundred and thirteen thousand, but the collections doesn't change. We are playing a shell game and, yes, that money is, is going to the checking account and being written to buy books, but we are buying less books with our own CLN money. And we're using it for rental or for something else. Please consider delaying the start of the rental to make the, the balance and the budget balance instead of CLN or the, uh, collection's not changing.
Trustee Robinson.
So I get both points, but the I print money is going for material, period. And the money that was already in that line item, some of that is being taken out, and I get why you say it's a shell game. You, and you can call it whatever you want, and that is the fact that money is taken out of the original pot and spread out to other line items. And then, yay, we have this I print money that we can also add back to it. So there's a lot of things you could call that, but it's also called budgeting. Um, I'm, I'm definitely, um, supportive of the two percent with this. And another thing, uh, you always notice, or not you, everybody notices that, um, it's so unpredictable, you know? We're always like, oh, wow, we're coming into a little extra money here, or wow, they want to take some back, you know, there's, it's, everything's changing all the time. So I'm fine with the taking two percent and I'm fine with the amount of I print going into that uh, material selection and then some of them from the original pot of that line item coming out to to bolster up some of the other line items.
Other comments, questions, just trustee Adam.
I think it's really important that we do move the district offices sooner rather than later because we have a lot of people, a lot of patrons that, um, are very insecure since the CIN is no longer. And I think we need to be very proactive with what it is that we're gonna do to move forward for this bright future, because we do have a bright future. And I'm very excited about, um, the future and the director's vision. And I think that us making sure that we start on that path as soon as possible so that it's as smooth a transition as possible for our patrons is really important.
Trustee plus.
I contend, if we want to show our patrons that we're doing something, let's go buy more books. Let's go buy more classics, we know from the list of what's being checked out that we don't have enough of, let's go buy them. We have open space out here, we have, we can fit in more shelves, we don't need such a big middle aisle. We have space, we don't need the offices, the offices aren't going to convince anybody anything. Getting more books and more material so that when they go to order it from our courier or in our courier, we need to have that. So let's, if anything, let's spend more I print money and not worry about offices right now.
Trustee Robinson.
Um, I think that the money should be there in the budget for the office spaces, uh, as soon as they need them. Um, I wouldn't mind if it's delayed a little bit because we do have room out in, in the library for more books. Um, but I do think that it should be in the line, it should be available for as soon as it's needed to go, so I, I wouldn't want to reduce it.
And then I would say, listen, the director wants it's possible, something could pop up and we want to eat one of them, we can. And I can't speak for what efficiencies would be gained, then maybe there are some there by putting the, putting my headquarters stand through, all of them in one room, and then the libraries, libraries, separate. Trustee plus.
If we do the office space right away, it's clear from the budget, we're gonna have less I print money. The I print money is decreasing if we take the full amount of, uh, hundred and thirty-two thousand. Seems to be coming from no place else but I print, I print's the only thing on this whole budget that's changing. The I print line, four eighty changes and so does, and, uh, you know, nothing, well, nothing else is changing, but the full year, I'm just suggesting you could compensate and not take from I print by changing to nine months instead of twelve months. I print's the only place the money's coming from, folks, it's, if we do this, we're using up I print money and we won't have to buy the books.
And so if we don't get an office space immediately, we can probably use somebody office space money to help purchase books, I assume, and not spend as many I print, director.
Shell game is a relatively, uh, negative term. I think it's, uh, sometimes referred to as a swingling trick. So gotta take a little bit of offense to it, but in any case, uh, it's not really a shell game because it's quite clear that the I print money is a restricted, uh, fund for books. It's going to be used as, I mean, the better term would be subsidizing, it's subsidizing the number in the book line, that's it. That's it, I mean, we're going around and around and so, there's nothing else happening here, except for the one thing, which is that I print, which is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, a known entity which we knew about, saying this is for books, right? And I've explained it all before many times. So the thing about the lease though, is that that's the number that we're gonna need. We're gonna need a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, eleven thousand a month, that's kind of the ballpark that we're looking at. If we don't get into the lease on October first, which we won't, uh, we're, we're looking at a few things, um, if it's six months down the road, then as far as budgeting is concerned, your projected year end for that code will be, uh, well, we will have sixty-six thousand dollars sitting there. And at that point in time, the trustees can say, we would like to allocate the sixty-six thousand dollars to books. Now, you do that, if you subtract two hundred and fifty-five thousand from the three percent sixty thousand, sixty thousand I print money, I'm not going to be spending the I print money, like turning to my question development person, say, hey, let's make sure we spend the I print money first. Right, so if we get to March and we have sixty-six thousand dollars sitting in that line without having to change anything, all you have to do is say, we allocate that money to collections. So now collections hits projected year end October of twenty-six, right, September twenty, and we spent two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on books. None of it was I print money, none of it. And then the next year, I'm gonna do the same thing, I'm gonna say I've got two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of I print money for books. And at that point, if for some reason other things happen, as trustee, uh, Robinson said, like fluctuation, all of a sudden I'm able to sustain two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And I think that's why it began with my first draft and the projection to thirty, 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 right? So if that's the case, I would love to be able to say, let's spend all two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on books, all of it at once, project. Here's all this money, let's go to, but we can't, and we have to be realistic, right? If, if, if you, if you say that paperbacks are like ten bucks to nine, nine ninety-nine to ninety-nine-nine, right? And then hardbacks to twenty to twenty-nine, so if you take twenty dollars is the average cost of a book, it's gonna be five hundred thousand dollars to get twenty-seven thousand items. There's no correlation between just dumping money into books and building a good collection, I'm here to build a good collection. And it will take time, right? We still have interlibrary loans at our disposal, we still have other things at our disposal to satisfy our patron. Libraries are long-term, you know, we're out for five millennia, right? This isn't a quick, if we can, if you want to give me more money, that's great, if you want to buy five hundred thousand dollars, that's great. But you do have the option at any point in the year, right, to be looking at projected year ends and say a carryover, for example, right, put it in the books. So I think we're all on the same page, it isn't a shell game, I'm subsidizing the book line with a restricted fund for books, right? It has nothing to do with the lease line, right? And this isn't about getting district offices only, I mean, anyone could, anyone understand, everyone should understand that your headquarters should have all the people working together in the same room, right? That's a no-brainer. But the real focus of it here is that when I presented it, Hayden, if we take district out of Hayden, it's essentially a new branch. It's the same size or bigger than, uh, Spirit Lake, Apple, right? So if I was to say, I'd like to build a new branch, that would be two point five, probably three point five million dollars up on the prairie. Now, I remember we're gonna have to ask you that for the next, you know, ten-year projection of growth. We basically get a whole new branch size by doing this district move. So it's not just about, and, and you could say, yes, there's a little bit of room to add one or two stacks in Post Falls, but there's also other aspects here, right? We're talking about aesthetics, beauty, it's a, it's a hub, it's a welcoming space. One of the biggest feedback, one of the biggest, uh, things of feedback we got with Apple and Piper and Post Falls reopening is how beautiful it is, how spacious, how nice, how comforting, how open, so yeah, we can jam it full of books, but we don't really have to. That's the whole purpose with this move, it's not just, such as the director having a preference for, you know, renovations. I think this is a, this is a no-brainer logistic move to give our patrons the priority, especially in Hayden, where the biggest priority with the CLN, CIN dissolution is that area around Hayden Port Lane. There's total misunderstanding of what a taxing district means and what library they belong to. We need to focus on Hayden and, and make it the best library it can be. So there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, but it's certainly not a shell game, there's nothing unusual happening here. It's just simply, we have this money, it's going to books, and I'd love to put more money into books. If we have thirty, if we have ten thousand dollars left over from snow removal one year, trustees could say, can we please allocate that to books? And I'd say, yeah, so we're on the same page, uh, so I think we can find a good solution.
Trustee plus.
I would, um, suggest somebody else can come up with another line I have to pick on than, uh, rental, that was an obvious one to me. We're talking the difference. I mean, what is there and what I would say with the extra levy that we just approved, if we do two percent, it's thirty-six thousand. I would rather that we plan from the start to instead of reducing the amount of money CLN is putting into books and taking more from I print fund to make up the difference. On to make up the difference. And the less that we see all that is taking of our money for books. And that goes to rent. I would rather that we. Say we're going to put a certain amount of CLN money into books and a certain amount of I print money into books. And then find something else to pick on. If it's not. Thirty six thousand can come from something else. But I contend that it's coming from books. We're taking the I print or the I CLN money out of books and putting it into the rant or putting it into something. But if we can. Find something else like legal. Fleet maintenance or I don't know what other line items. I'm just looking to not take money out of, and maybe shell game wasn't fair, but. We're taking money out of. CLN money out of the line item for collections and we're putting in extra money or taking more money out of. I could, I could trust to put in there to make up for it. I'm just asking that we reduce something else so that we are making it real clear what we're doing with the books. And I agree, if we got extra money, I don't know why you can't. If you know the books that. You've got it from the computer analysis, you know what's being checked out. You know that a bunch of Laura Engel Wilders is being. Borrowed from CIN and we've only got one copy. Let's put some more money to it and go buy eight copies or however many are being borrowed from CIN. We know what we need from, or it may take some time to analyze it, but we don't have to spend years to try to figure out what people wanted. And what we should get to, to. To counter what CIN was providing. I think we're a lot closer than what you're suggesting and. I don't know why we can't. Go do that, but I would like to keep I print money. And CLN money very clear what's going to books and not. Be adjusting it.
If I remember what the director said in one of the other meetings, he wishes to create the space, create the infrastructure. For the ex reger collection. Before he put the collection in boxes in the inner buildings. I think essentially that's what he's getting at. That's why he wanted to free up a lot of space at the Hayden facilities, example. So he can make that a larger library and. Obviously keep those patrons even happier than they are now. Further discussion regarding the motion. Can we count the vote where we wish to vote on it?
Yes. Oh, director, please. I just want to throw one thing I like. Books is what the library is all about. So as a librarian. I would trim any line I could to add more books. So if you're looking for other lines to trim. I'm going to have to say, well, any place I can trim, I'm going to trim for books because that's what I am, right? So I, I mean, we're, we're, all these lines were running as lean as, and I use that in the fit sense, right? As lean as we can. And if we get a trust of moral, you know, a hundred thousand, put on books. The librarian is always going to be wanting to put money on books because that's what libraries are. So I just hesitate to think, okay, let's pour over every line and see if we can trim a thousand here, five thousand. Because we're talking five hundred thousand dollars, one lump sum to get twenty dollar books. To twenty seven thousand books, right? I mean, we're not in that market. We're not in the market to come. I don't, I'm not saying it takes a long time. I'm just saying every single library has the issue of we can't buy everything. We don't have the money to buy everything and therefore collection development becomes both an art and a science where we decide what we want. I'm committing here and I'm quite clearly that the goal is to create good collections, right? So. Maybe it's two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars and I wish it was four hundred thousand, but we're going to use the two hundred and fifty five thousand to curate quality collections. For the children, you know, for the young adults, for the adults, like that's the goal. You can always donate books, right? And we intend to, but you're not going to find other lines here to trim. Because there's trim as we can trim them.
This is further discussion on the fiscal year twenty sixth budget. I think we're approaching the possibility of voting on it at this point. Oh, trustee plus, please go ahead. And I don't mean to pick on you, but you just speak within most people. So I'll make sure at different times in the meeting, everyone gets a chance, that's all.
I moved, I moved that we take two percent. And adjust. The. District rent down to ninety five thousand five sixty five. So it's planned. So the two percent with. But actually, it would be increased, you'd have to add the twenty five thousand two eighty one to property taxes.
Can you write the motion out? I can't, I can't add a little bit as you go.
Wow.
Can we give a motion of making?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that top line item. We just approved in the last agenda item that it's increasing twenty five thousand eight ninety one. So I'm not saying what that number is. I didn't add it up yet. But the motion is take two percent. With. Eight eighty five rental lease. Decrease to nine fifty five or ninety five, five sixty five, ninety five, five sixty five.
You need to write it out for me. I can't. They have taken in pieces. Just the.
I just said it. You want me to write it and hand it to you?
Yes, yes, so we go, we know.
Okay, so the levy amount is a completely different thing than the budget, correct? So it doesn't need to be on a balance sheet.
It needs to be to balance.
I mean, technically, based on the. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it was, we got it already and. We're in a levy, we lost it this year, right? It was deducted from this one. So if we're being levy, we want to add it to this one. It's not, I'm not sure it's technically in that line. It will allow, will increase. It's on a different line in the L two. But if we're just trying to add twenty six thousand, wherever it is to the hundred and two. That's, that's fine. I just, I just want to say. I don't, I'm not sure following the logic, but I can, obviously, I can guarantee that we'll be sitting here next year. And I'm going to be asking for a hundred and thirty thousand in the lease line. So you can drop it now. But if we get into a lease that's eleven thousand a month, if you get to do it in March, you're going to have to accept a hundred and thirty thousand next year. So I, to me, I'm just, why not just do it the way I said, like the other way? Where projected year end for that line is where the money will come from. Why deduct it now? That's fine, but I can do anything. But basically next year I'm coming saying it's eleven thousand a month, whenever we get into it. So you can reduce it now, but it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Trusty Robinson.
And I think it's already been said that if the rental space isn't. Procured right away. Then the leftover money can go to the material selection line. So that's kind of like flipping what trustee plot was saying, but it's still the same thing. Just without forcing them to miss out on maybe getting a good rental space because they don't have enough. Budgeted.
Okay, I'm waiting for you to draft up. What's the last of something? You can draft up.
I don't know if I need to say all the numbers that are changing. So that's what it was after.
Normally what we do is we propose a change and then we all agree to it or don't agree. And then that, that line gets changed or not. And then we just vote on the percent at the end.
It sounds more straightforward or easier that way.
Well. Have to do that.
I agree with trustee Otis and that's the way we've always done it. Just address. A line item, a change that somebody might want, and then we can just like. The consensus on that.
It's the option.
So usually that's the way we've done it. And that makes more sense to me, but that doesn't mean that we're. We're limited to only doing it that way in the future, but this could be quicker.
Okay, so. I'll say. Well, you can read and pass it back to me, but I'll read what's coming up here. That trustee plus is going to move that we accept a two percent increase. With line item eight eighty five. Check it out. With eight eighty five. Changing to ninety five thousand five sixty five. As it impacts things before we go to the motion.
I move that.
All right, so then I'll be, I'll be, you moved it. It's been moved that we accept a two percent increase with line item eight eighty five, change in the ninety five thousand five sixty five. Is there, whether there's a discussion on that before we vote? Is this still a guess for here?
I don't know if in the motion you have to say where you're putting that extra money that you're taking out from line item eight eighty five. I would think you'd need to.
That's yes.
I like, yeah, I think you're right. We would be, it would, so there would have to be an amendment, but I'm not for this anyway, so we could just. Not that I'm the only one, but.
Well, I'm not sure that I am as well. Do you wish this, yes, trustee plus?
I left out part of it. I guess I should make an amendment, but it's also changing I print for eighty to fifty thousand instead of one twelve.
So am I hearing you're making an amendment to a motion?
Well, I'm saying I didn't write it out, right? I needed all the numbers because we're also adding twenty five eight ninety one. From the last agenda item. But yeah, my amendment would be to change. Four seventy to fifty, line four seventy, four eighty, I grant trust to fifty thousand. And. Property tax total. Increases twenty five thousand eight ninety one.
You still working on your amendment?
Well, I.
What I have to do is you make your amendment, I, and then we vote on the amendment and then we, we are disagreed in amendment and we go back to the main motion. If I got my procedure accurate, like just trustee Otis, then go ahead. And then I'll go back to your trustee plus.
Actually, you could just withdraw.
You wish to withdraw that motion? No, you, sorry, the amendment to your motion.
I want to correct the, clarify the amendment. The amendment is to also change. Or eighty I print. For fifty thousand and change. Increased property tax total.
You're going to have to write that one out for me. You're making it too difficult for me. I'm trying to do my job. It's a person who makes the motion whose job is to formulate the motion, not the chair. Trustee Otis.
I have an idea if you're agreeable. I could. Propose a substitute motion, which.
We still have a motion on the floor, so I don't know how we handle that.
Probably should just, yeah, let him.
Yeah, that's either withdrawn or amended.
It's amended, it's the second bracket there. My amendment is and to decrease line five four eighty I print by fifty thousand.
By fifty thousand?
To fifty thousand. And change property tax, increase property tax total by twenty five thousand eight ninety one.
It's been moved. It's been moved to amend the motion. To decrease line item four eighty I print to fifty thousand dollars and. Have a twenty five thousand eight hundred ninety one dollar increase to property taxes. So. All those in. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing no discussion of amendments, we're voting now on the amendment, not the main motion. So it's been moved that we amend the main motion to decrease line item four eighty I print. Fifty thousand dollars and increase twenty five thousand eight hundred ninety one dollars property tax total. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
No. We have two votes down.
No.
No?
There's like one eye, so the rest are.
So the. The motion was, the motion to amend the main motion was, the words are in the voice shot down.
What is it?
It fails.
It failed. Okay, so now we go back to the main motion. The motion, the main motion on the floor still is to move that we accept a two percent increase. With line item eight eighty five, change in the ninety five thousand five hundred and sixty five dollars. So that's now back open for discussion if there is a.
It doesn't. Work as it doesn't say the whole picture of what has to change.
Call the question.
Okay, it's moved, let me see. Probably awful my first time here. It's silly thing to think about now. Let me see what we got here.
I think we voted on.
It's been vote, we're now voting on the decision to. Vote on the item. It's a, so, so let me think I got it correct. I have my notes, I can't find, they're down here deep in my stuff. So we're now voting, basically. To correct on whether we proceed with the vote.
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm thinking, I maybe should consult my others. Yeah, I would have got away, excuse me, we're still ahead of schedule anyway, so. You know, let us start somewhere later. This is really cheat sheet, I was going to find it here. Okay. Okay, if I got this part correct, it has been moved to order the previous question. Explain that that, that's all for the debate. And that those in favor of ordering the previous question, say aye. Now that's we're deciding basically. All those in favor of going back and voting on the motion that's on the floor, the main motion. All those in favor of that, say aye.
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 Both opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We're now voting without further discussion on the motion. It's on the floor, the main motion. The main motion on the floor is to move that we accept a two percent increase with line item eight eighty five, change in the ninety five thousand five hundred and sixty five dollars. All those in favor, say aye. Right? I'm waiting for three more votes here.
Nice. I was waiting for you to say any names.
Yeah.
Or any opposed.
That's very good. Back minutes again, this is correct. My timing, this doesn't slow out well. Voting, there we go. The notes have it, the motion is lost. Trustee Robinson.
The other Robin. I move that we accept two percent budget as is on the draft.
It has been moved that. It has been moved that we accept the 2% proposal on the fourth draft. Is that correct? The fourth draft.
Right, right. Accept 2% budget as is on the draft.
Okay, let me borrow that. It has been moved that we accept a 2% budget, let's say increase.
As is.
Is, okay. It has been moved that we accept a 2% budget as is on the draft. Is there further, is there discussion on that, trustee plus?
You said, the budget still has to change by 25,891, the total tax, and then where is that money going?
I think it was said that was a.
We're going to collect, we just voted on this for Vista, we're going to collect an additional 25,891.
Interesting.
And we, the budget should show where that goes. And I intend that it should be decreasing the amount that we're taking from ICRIM. Let's make it really clear. But there's 25,891 coming in that we're ignoring. I mean, we just voted on it, the previous agenda item.
Could we hear from staff to see what, where that money is?
I guess my, my only question, I guess, is from the county's perspective, is the allowable increase line, where that money would go? Because if you're voting on this, you can vote on this the way it is. Unless they're saying that that money is included in the allowable increase line, but I'm not sure that's what it would say on the L2. So it is a different amount of money. You could vote on where that money goes, but I'm not sure that has anything to do with this budget. Because this budget is as is, which has allowable increase at 102 at the 2%, so that other choice had nothing to do with the 2%. So I mean, it, you have to add another terminology, I don't know what that is. If it's not allowable increase.
Trustee plus. It's simply another line item there. You've got growth, you've got property taxes, growth estimate, allowable increase, and then total. So you have to add a line item under allowable increases, which is the VISTA log case taxes, 25,891. We need to put it here because it's coming in and we need to have it in our budget. But where is that money going to? We're going to collect it, we just voted on it.
If you're asking me what I would do with it if it was added to this line, it will go to collections. Like I said before, any extra money, I'm going to be putting on collections, so that would reduce the 100.
Yes.
Well, I CRIM that I need to dip into.
Exactly.
To me, it's, we're on the same page. We're saying the same thing, we're just coming in.
I'm just saying our budget is not what's shown here. Our budget is not taking this 25,891. So I contend that you need another line. You have growth, allowable increase, and then there's now another line next to the county this month, which is what we just voted on, 25,000. So it won't balance unless you take that 25,000 and put it someplace. So I say reduce add it, add it to that upper line right above property tax total, add another line, 25,891, and then change ICRIM 112 through 26, decrease it by that same amount, and then it'll balance.
So I guess we could do, I don't know what people want to do here, but we could. With all the motion that's on the floor at the moment, could. Then we could go ahead and make a budget adjustment if that's agreeable to everyone, meaning showing a new line of income and showing a reduction in the amount of ICRIM money we're going to spend on collections. If that resolves, and then go back and move on to trustee Robinson.
The business manager wanted to.
I didn't see that. It's with permission of the board? Trustee plus.
We can vote and just change your amendment, just to vote on 2%, but don't say that as on the draft. We're going to take 2%. We still have to fix the budget. And we can do that as a separate thing, I think. So if we just change the amendment to go to 2%, I think we have to fix the budget as another thing to vote on that.
So we think we get the budget aligned where we want it, and then vote, I don't know, this kind of, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like the voting on the percentage increase is kind of like the final step, we're approving the budget period as we put it together, but with the board's permission, I'll go to the business manager.
The 25,891 has already been reduced in fiscal year '25. So if we add that on the L2, that's helpful, but it's a side issue, it's somewhat irrelevant because this is the budget that we have been working on for months. And this, a budget is a budget, it's not down to the penny. Because the amount that comes in from the county, as we saw in the accounts receivables, can vary up to 200,000. So in my business manager assessment, and I, of course, want to follow all accounting guidelines, I do not think it's necessary to deal with adding this to the budget. I think approving it as is gives the director the flexibility, if we get extra money, that he can put it toward collections.
Thank you.
Trustee plus.
I think we're completely clear to this will go on our website and it should be, we should account for what we just voted for. Somebody can ask us where did that money come from, if we don't want to put out a press release. But I do not think we can put a budget out that doesn't acknowledge that money coming in, and that money, it doesn't matter what, what was paid at the end of July is already in our bank account. This money, this 25,891, will come in this fiscal year. They're running the.
Coming fiscal.
Right, starting October 1st. The Treasury will be sending out tax statements to everybody, and it will include the 25,000. We will get it, and we should add a line item saying it. And then it's changing ICRIM 480 to, instead of 112, it's 86,435. Anyway, but the other numbers then balance addicts at the bottom line, eight, would have to agree with. Well, there's also total revenues that has to go up by 25,000, which is right below 480, so. The total taxes, the total revenues, and the total expenditure should all go up by 25,000.
Again, with the board's permission, business manager.
On the budget, you'll notice under income, property taxes, there's a growth estimate, there's an allowable increase, and then the property taxes total. The growth estimate is dependent on what the county finds out about the amount of new property that is the, based on the growth and the property taxes that we receive. So this is our best budgeted, it's kind of like a guess, it's a draft.
I was going to call the question.
No, I saw your hand first, sorry, trustee plus.
I contend this is an unusual case, just like we did have income, URD plus. But this is income taxes, it's not income something else, so it should go on here, we know it. And we just voted on it, the county told us what it is, it needs to go on here. It has nothing to do with growth, has nothing to do with allowable increase. It's another thing, we, when we two years ago, or whenever it was, when the URD came up, we didn't even know about the URD closing, and we had to add it in, got to add it in as a as a income. I, I think it should be under taxes because it is a tax, but I guess it could just be income of Vista, but well, except that it's, it's not coming from something else, it's coming from the taxes, so it has to be on taxes, is what I would say.
With the board's permission, let me see, please.
Board also has the ability to reopen the budget and reallocate funds during the budget year. So again, we are voting on a draft that we are working towards. When we do the L2, we will actually have hard numbers, which could be different from our draft. And then the board can see the hard numbers, they can see what's coming in, and they can reopen the budget if necessary.
Thank you.
I called a question.
It has been asked, let me see here again. It has been moved to order the previous question. So that means we're going to actually vote. We end discussion at this point, and we move our main motion to the floor at least at this point, which I could borrow again, if you don't mind. Yeah. Read that word again.
As is.
As is, okay. It has been moved to accept the 2% budget as is on the draft. All those in, oh. Wait a minute.
The board is.
Hold on, we're first voting on whatever we're going to, go back to the question here, so all those that got back here. So it's been moved to order the previous question, and what this means is it cuts off further debate. And those in favor of ordering the previous question, say aye.
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 Right. Those opposed?
Yeah.
One name, trustee plus. Okay, we now return to the main motion. That's the one I just read, I borrowed again, I don't have my own things, or in my nature. Let me fix that word, budget as is. All right. It has been moved to accept the 2% budget as is on the draft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved or not approved? Yeah, approved. And the motion is adopted, the 2% budget is approved. Okay, that was. So now we're back to responses to public comment. I don't know, 14 on the agenda. Then you won't have any response to public comment. Trustee autos, and I saw your hand first.
Yes, so regarding the people who want more material purchases, that's awesome. The library definitely accepts donations regarding CLN's budget for legal counsel as compared with other libraries. Other boards, even previous CLN boards, could afford to be sloppy and complying with the law because conservatives tend not to be so happy. However, some would rather burn down an institution than let conservatives be in charge. Those who want to destroy children's innocence and well-being hate the current board majority. So they champion the bit to discredit and use lawfare against us for boarding their plans. This is evidenced by repeated threats of lawsuits when we don't do their will. So we pay to run everything through our attorney's fine-tooth comb to perfect them. And then, of course, the same people turn back to the problem they created and blame us for ensuring our policies are legally safe. No matter what we do, haters are going to hate and lie.
Thank you, trustee plus. Whoops, trustee plus, go ahead.
So I had a letter written to all the board, and I did respond, or individually not to the whole board, but I was, it was suggested in this letter that on July 17th, that I'm not paying attention to all the voters. And that there's 89,000 registered voters in Cootney County, and these are numbers that were provided, I don't think they're exactly right, but 52,000 in CLN. And I, in 2023, when I ran, I received 27% of the votes. I don't think the numbers are quite right, but anyway, I wrote back 27,000, 28,000 of the 38,000 who did not vote in the election. So I have to assume that those non-voters either didn't care or they were okay with whatever the ones who did vote selected. So if there were 14,000, I think it was more like, I don't know, there's 12,900 or 13,000, I don't think it was quite 14,000. But anyway, the ones that did vote for me, they went there and voted because 14,000 who did vote for me were well aware of my campaign platform. Because it was in my literature and my ads, my signs, there were some signs that just said our names, but most all of the signs and information had that I, my platform was the three Rs. Remove, restore, restrain. So I said, remove or prohibitive seen materials, restore, wholesome classic books, restrain, tax increases, implement fiscal discipline. And anyone can go back and look at the ads and things that were out there at the time. So those people who voted for me knew very well that I was going to restrict tax increases. And the majority, the large majority that voted for me, the 14,000 voted because they liked the things I was saying. They wanted me to go restrain tax increases for them. The ones who didn't vote for me, if they did vote, there weren't as many. So I am responding to the ones that voted for me, that that's what they want, and that's why I'm sitting in this seat. So I will continue to try to do what I can to remove, restore, restrain. So I don't think that's not, but I don't think some people are taxpayers, as has been said. I know they're all taxpayers, but the majority of them wanted me to restrain tax increases. So that's who I'm listening to.
Any other, any other responses to public comment? No? Okay, hence the agenda is to discuss future agenda requests. Does anyone have any future agenda requests? Trustee plus.
I think we need, I've asked for it before, but we're almost a year since our director was hired, we need to make it a priority to get an evaluation process. That's one of our jobs called out in our by-item statutes. And we're ignoring it, I think we need to, I'm not saying it needs to be a policy, but we need to have it on the agenda ASAP.
Any other?
And then, see, the other, the other item is what I brought up before, CIN financials. I don't think we were planning to discuss it, but I think we better get it figured out what that is, because word of mouth is, is nice. I guess if we control everything through our computers, we don't give them, but I just think we should get the CIN financial stuff, and it should be an agenda item.
Yeah. Do we need to have, right?
Oh, I was going to say, I agree with you, evaluation, because we are supposed to do that.
Yeah. It's coming up, and also the CIN financials, is that something we need to have a special meeting on, or do we need to have council involved? Do we, I don't, I don't, we can't, obviously, I don't think it's wise to wait until, you know, 30th of September. So I don't know how we time that, but it sounds like we need to know, I guess, how much of CLN's money is being used up, not used up, and how we close that out in the best interest of the taxpayers that put that money in there. You made suggestions on it right now, that we have a special meeting on it, because if we wait till, at least, September. Yeah, September meeting is going to be pretty late, we're third weekend of September at that point. So I don't know, are there any meetings, if that's okay to keep, are there any CIN meetings remaining or any more discussions with the players? I know there's not going to be a public meeting, but I don't think we know as a board how it's closing out. I don't think we fully understand that, trustee plus. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah.
I was asking for those for agenda items, but I, the next one is special meetings. I absolutely asked for a special meeting with council and maybe executive session added on it. Because I want to know who's that attorney is and why we're paying money to somebody's attorney that really shouldn't be there. I want to know where this money is, what happens to it at the end. that attorney is and why we're paying money to somebody's attorney that really shouldn't be there. I want to know where this money is, what happens to it at the end. And I think our attorney needs to be involved. Maybe he has to write something, or maybe he has to have some agreement or but I think there should be a special meeting with the executive session.
Your thoughts on that, Detective Turner?
Oh, yeah, I guess, I guess it's two separate things. If we're going to be talking about attorneys, and let's see if I can use the four, then that would be a special session. That's probably executive or counsel's here. The other issue is more like, as a, I'm only a member, or was a member of CIN among many, but I would turn, if I had, if I needed an answer about financial, I could turn to the CIN fiscal agent. Right? As with no special privilege, even though she's a CLN business manager, any, any member would be turned to the CIN fiscal agent and ask a question. So providing the trustees with an explanation of how the assets will be divvied up and all that kind of stuff is something I or any member could retrieve. I, I don't think there's any intention for them to have any more meetings. Everything is just being sorted out. Overdrive is being sorted out. The ILS is being sorted out. Courier, like all that stuff's being sorted. So if it's just getting a little bit of a deeper dive into what the balance sheet actually means, that could just be an agenda item. I could try and help prepare having a discussion with the EIM escalation to get some of those answers. But I think that's just an agenda item where the people want this question.
And they certainly don't think we can wait until late September to do this. So do we, do you think we set a special meeting date here? Or do we agree we need a special meeting and then look for a date?
Well, I guess my only concern is I'm not sure what it is you would want from what was said earlier. The biggest question was, what are the assets, the 80 something thousand, and how is it going to be divvied up?
Well, I think we still have money. We're supposedly paying out. We have money that is out there. There's money on the CIN's books, I understand, I think. I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable understanding how it's winding down. I, I'll be honest with you. I want to make sure that they're not walking away with our money. They, I don't know who they are out there, and I don't, I don't understand it. I don't know if anybody else does. As long as not, we're, we're talking agenda with, with the board's permission. Go ahead, business manager.
Board might want to take into consideration that the check that was sent to the Holy Truxler legal firm is about $1,500 to have a special meeting and ask this council to come will cost us quite a bit of money. I don't know if it's worth us spending that money to regain $1,500.
Trustee boss.
Well, I, I don't particularly want to say some things that I'm looking at here, but I would add in a special meeting. But I've got the GPA or JPA that formed this in 84. And they refer to pursuant to authority granted in sections 67, 23, 26, and 67, 23, Idaho code, and an interstate library compact. And it, it doesn't say anything. I want to talk to the attorney about this. But the first one says joint powers. Or you're given permission to do this. The second one says something about state of Idaho with adjoining state, a sister state, I guess is what they call it. But the interstate library compact is just a form that doesn't, anyway, I, I don't think they I want to talk about this agreement with him and I want to I want to know what, I, I don't know how we find out, but what is that attorney doing?
Okay, we understand it. This is about the agenda requests.
But I think it should be a special meeting, executive. There's more to it than what I just said here.
All right.
I, I feel like if a special meeting, an executive session is needed, that the director would alert the board of that, the director or counsel. I don't think we're at that point. So I'm not for a special meeting for that right now.
I tend to think we need a special meeting. And if it works this way, we can say, we can have consensus, not consensus, to have a special meeting and set a date at a future time and work with the director and or counsel. That would work. Trustee Robinson.
Or add it to the next meeting.
Which is, it is two weeks, it's two, it's a week before I close out. See, I don't think it's sufficient time to have it at our next regular meeting and try and wrap it up in a clean fashion and making sure it's favorable to us.
Well, if it's just the $1,500.
No, I think it's a lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so if we're okay with that, I think why don't they ask for a special meeting? I don't know what that date is yet. And we can kick it around and we got some idea on that. And between director and myself, talk to counsel and see if we can get some guidance. I believe, I want to see a nice clean wrap up. I don't want to leave it where after the first comes around, we got money floating around. We don't know what's going on with it. I want to close it clean. So any other agenda requests? Okay, well, and I'll hand out also, it was requested for last meeting that we have a CLN board parking lot items. So you can see things that we agreed to at different meetings that we said, oh, that has to be taken care of someday. We still need three of them. So if you all are, I think I'm moving to third, that's next up. Yes. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
It's been moved that you adjourn. All of us in, say aye.
Aye.
I have the ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.